I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, would you take roll call, please?
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Kern?
Here.
Mr. McCucci?
Here.
Mrs. Mitchell? Mr. Akmanowicz?
He is here. He's just not here here.
Mrs. Weed? Mr. De Liberto?
Here.
And Mr. Klein?
Here. Okay. Announcements, this meeting is being recorded by the Board Secretary. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 27th meeting of the School Board of Directors? Mr. Kern, second?
Second.
Mr. McCucci, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. First, general public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for comment tonight?
We do.
We do.
Nicholas Birch?
Do I have to do the formality of Nicholas Birch, not Richland or anything like that? Do you want me to cover all of that still, or are we okay?
I think you just did.
So this is my annual thing where I come and I invite the Board to the high school Shakespeare Day that we have each year. It's again, thanks to a lot of the support from most of you and Dr. Hoffman, because honestly, without this, it doesn't happen for the kids. This year, October 25th, and if you don't mind, we can just take one and pass those, please. This year, October 25th, all of the AP Literature Seniors will take place in workshops with Broadway actors that are housed outside of Desales for this contract. And they are going to be performing "A Midsummer Night's Dream" to the students. The students of AP will get four different workshops. They will learn everything about "A Midsummer Night's Dream" and Shakespeare's timeline and language, through language, through how it affects the AP exam, and how it helps them understand the different plays that we cover together, all in one-hour workshops rotating throughout the morning. In the afternoon, the actors will perform "A Midsummer Night's Dream" for all the AP students, all the theater students that we have, and every Britlet Honors student that we have at the high school. So it's a great opportunity. This year, all the kids that, since they do not have to pay for it, all the kids are donating money to Quakertown Cares. And they're giving every penny they have from lunch, they just drop it in a box. And our goal is to try to raise as much money as possible and help the kids understand it's important to give back to the community. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Oh, our pleasure. Thank you very much.
Yeah, the kids had a great time last year, and Gary was covering the whole thing, so that was another good one.
I heard Gary's playing Pan this year?
I'm gonna sit down. Good. Thank you very much.
Is there any particular time we should come?
Oh, in that blue folder is a, on the left-hand side is the list of workshops. So there will be four workshops that happen, and they're referred to as Session One and Session Two. It's called a timeline. It's the other paper. Okay, it has a timeline for you. So basically, 9:00 to 9:40 is one session, and 10:00 to 10:40 is another session. But when you come in, I can take you to all four sessions that are happening at the same time, and you can see them all. Alright, so the location, the house location this year will basically be the Q-PAC, the library, and the band room, and the hallway. They actually went to hallway this year to teach them about nonverbal storytelling, how to make inferences about the text. So that's a pretty good one. But great, and thanks again. A lot of times, Board members do come out, so thank you again for that.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Birch.
Alright, thank you.
Do we have anyone else that would like to make any public comment at this time? Okay, moving on then. This brings us to the Superintendent Report. Sir?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all again. First up tonight, I'd like to do a couple student recognitions. First, Nam Lee, come on up, sir. Nam Lee, excuse me. Nam Lee is one of our high school seniors, who is one of 50,000 out of over a million and a half students, the top 50,000 on the PSAT that he took last year. He is a rock star, academic rock star, obviously, for being one of the top students. He has been recognized by the National Merit Foundation for being a commendable, commendable status, being a top 50. How the process works, you take the PSAT. We pay for it as, for all of our 10th graders. It's something the Board annually approves to do that. And I just think we just took it yesterday in the high school. We're nodding. You're a parent of a 10th grader who took one, so we got that. You're not. She is. Okay, she just took it? And then also 11th graders take it. When they take it in 11th grade, they use that score to select the top 50,000 for the commendables. And after that, then the notch gets a little bit tighter, and it goes up to semifinalists and finalists. For this Upper Bucks area, Montgomery County, Southern Lehigh area, we're the only ones. We had, this is the, we've doubled our highest take with four this year. And I wanted to recognize those two who made it to the commendable status. So I have Nam Lee now. Now, what I'd like you to do is to get up and do a little bit of public speaking for yourself and share with the Board what you participate in here and what you're thinking about doing next. Please.
A little shorter. So, right now, outside of school, my main thing is I do Taekwondo. I've been doing Taekwondo since I was four years old, so it's a very integral part of my life. In school, I do indoor and outdoor track. It's something I've been doing since 7th grade. So again, something that's very integrated into my life. And it gets busy, but I think it keeps school from getting a little bit too bland with, you know, all the APs. So, I am the Vice President of NHS, which has been very rewarding so far. Seems a lot more intuitive this year, so I'm looking forward to working with students with that. I'm a part of Student Council, and I do TSA as well. Qualified for states once now, twice, I don't remember. But yeah, I do like to do clubs outside of school. And this is very nice, and I'm honored to receive this and be invited here. So as for the future, don't really know. LOL, maybe? I haven't decided yet, kind of just focused on getting the grades to do what I want to do when I do decide, so.
Any schools going early decision?
I'll be doing early action to Villanova for sure, and I'm looking at some other ones. But Villanova only because they only consider you for their honors program if you do early action. So I guess I'm kind of forced to do this early.
So what, Don, are you in Taekwondo?
I am third degree.
Third degree, black belt? Wow. I bet, who do you think up here is also a black belt?
Strangers. I have no idea.
Okay.
I am a blue belt.
Ah. Congratulations.
Brown.
Brown. I'm among my own people. I appreciate it.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations, and thank you very much for coming in from your very, very busy schedule. Haley, come on up. Why don't you, since you have your parents here, why don't you both come up? Stace, Chris? Yeah, yes, yes. Come on, put you on the spot. Come on. You're also in our employment, so it's easier to come. As most of you know, you see Chris in our facilities meetings. He is our engineer for Boucher &amp; James in helping us with a lot of projects. The 6th Grade Center Parking Lot is one of them, most recently. And then over here with the Nidek Project. Stacy works right on the other side of this wall in the conference room over in the business office. We're very blessed to have them both contributing. But tonight, it's all about you. And here's your letter of commendation from the National Merit Organization. Haley, I know a little bit more about. I've been around her a little bit. I do know that what she aspires to, Emory is her first choice?
Yes.
And that hasn't changed?
No.
University of South Carolina Honors College, which, I'm not a graduate of the Honors College, but I'm a three-times-over graduate degree and PhD from University of South Carolina. You're in the BioCam. You want to work in the CDC, as I remember our conversation?
Yes.
And she's involved in all kinds of things at school, and I'll let her talk to you about that.
Sure. Okay, so I am involved in many different things in the school. I partake in Reading Olympics throughout the entire school year. In addition to that, I also act as our Vice President for Model UN. I've also done two international conferences in New York City and Washington DC for that club. I am also our Secretary for NHS this year, and as Nam said, that's been very rewarding so far. I'm also our Treasurer for Minithon, which we're really hoping to raise over $20,000 this year to benefit pediatric cancer. Last year, we raised over $14,000, and we're really hoping to bring that number up a little bit more to help those children. I also play lacrosse in the spring, and I acted as a captain last year as well. And as Dr. Harner said, in the future, I want to major in Biology or Immunology, and I'd like to go to Emory University ideally, and then pursue a PhD after that as well. Thank you.
She's only a little busy. Gary, a picture of the family out here. Could you go right there with the Quakertown sign? Yes, we have to do that.
Haley, I have one suggestion for Minithon to raise more money. Have a dunking booth with Dr. Harner. Oh, cool. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Get them all. Put up your certificates there. Put them up. Put your certificates up. There you go. Congratulations. In consideration of the Eagles game that starts a little bit after 8 o'clock tonight, my Superintendent's Report is going to be very short. Dr. Hoffman is up.
And with that introduction, I don't have much to say, no. So I just wanted to do a brief overview of the Program of Studies since that will be coming up for a vote. And I know that we do have a number of new Board members who may not have seen a Program of Studies or really understand what it is that they may be voting on. So taking some of the feedbacks from some previous meetings about wanting to learn a little bit more about what you're going to be voting on in advance of that, I just have a brief overview for you. So we'll just be talking about what the Program of Studies is, some of our goals with the Program of Studies, highlighting a couple changes for this upcoming year, and then kind of launching into what I hope in the future will be a broader discussion about what defines success here in Quakertown. It's not a conversation that we need to have tonight, but just to kind of get us thinking about some of those things. So the Program of Studies really is a guiding document for our students for their course selection. It highlights every single class that we offer at the high school level. It provides a description for each class. All of those descriptions are from the Board-approved planned course statements that you see come through. It just explains exactly what students can expect from that class, if there's any prerequisites or things that they may need to know before taking the class. And then, most importantly, it really outlines what the requirements are for students to be a graduate. So we're highlighting for students early on what they need to do over their four years as a student with us, so that they can really take their time to plan out what they hope to do in the time that they're with us, or if it takes the student a little bit longer to come to the decision about what they might want to do. It offers them opportunities to see where the, what they might want to do fits within what our graduation requirements are. So the goals for us, when we set out to do the Program of Studies, are to make sure that we meet our graduation requirements with the Board has set forth for us for our students, which currently is 24 credits overall, that we provide a lot of opportunity for students to explore things that they may be interested in. So it's a belief of mine, and I'm sure many of us, that having a student try something out as a high school student is more beneficial than having them choose to go to college and then decide it's not for them, or pick a career and maybe they don't love it. So getting some different experiences while you're still in high school can help guide your path a little bit. It also allows students to choose things that they are most interested in, in terms of elective classes. We also want to make sure that we have appropriate levels of support and rigor for all of our students, so making sure that we have, you know, certainly AP classes, so that we can have our students who are here with us tonight and celebrate their success. Students who are on a more college prep-bound level, but maybe aren't prepared to take that high-level rigor, that they have enough honors classes or college prep-level classes that meet their needs. And then any of our students who need specialized support, have those classes available to them as well. We want to make sure that we're supporting all students with their post-high school plans. So while our first obligation is certainly to make sure that they meet state requirements and get our diploma, we also know that this isn't going to be the end for them. And we want to make sure that they have whatever skills they need to go out and ensure college and career readiness. So some of our major changes for next year, and the whole document is posted in Board Docs, and it's a Google Doc, so you can click on that. And, you know, at your leisure, you can read through all of the content there. But just to highlight the major changes, we have renamed and realigned our English classes. And you'll remember, if you were at the Education Committee meeting a couple months ago, we had a number of English teachers there. Mr. Birch has actually joined us for that meeting as well. And one of the things that we decided to do at that time was to realign our English classes to be more grade-level specific. So you're taking English 9, English 10, English 11, English 12. And within those classes, allow the teachers to have some flexibility when they're writing the curriculum to consider different types of literature. So instead of only teaching American literature in 10th grade, you may be able to bring some of that work now into a different grade level. So that's the work that was done through the curriculum cycle. We did add AP Mandarin. We now have a group of students who have completed the first three levels of Mandarin and would be ready for advanced study there. As I shared with the Ed Committee before this meeting, we added two potential new courses for Upper Bucks County Technical School. So they have not gotten formal approval for those classes at this point, but have indicated to us that they plan to do so. So we want to make sure that our students know that they are available to select. And those classes would be in Heating, Ventilation, Air Conditioning, so HVAC, Refrigeration also, and the Biosciences, looking at plant and animal technology. So I think we have a number of students who have expressed interest in that and would find those to be great paths for them. We are also seeking approval to add an additional .5 credit of Health as a requirement for students. So this class would take some of the health content that we're already teaching and expand upon it. We currently have one-half credit required, so this would make it a full credit. We are also looking at how we can best meet the needs of what we've heard from our students in terms of needing some support with mental health concerns, stress relief concerns, a lot of the topics that are coming out of our work with the Safety Committee, which Ms. Edwards is chairing, and making sure that we're covering that content with our students. Things are very different for our high school students now than they have been in the past, some of the challenges that they face. And we want to make sure that all of our students, before they leave us, have adequate exposure to these skills. On this slide also, you'll see that we are looking to adjust the math and science credits to be seven total. So you would have a minimum of three of each, a minimum three math and a minimum of three science. And then your seventh could come from either math or science. That does not apply to students who go to the technical school. They need three of each. They would not have to take an additional credit because their additional credits are in the form of elective credit at the technical school. But for the general population, we're finding that a number of our students are finishing their required science classes, Biology, Chemistry, Physics, by junior year. And they may want to choose a different class instead of choosing an AP Science class. And we want to give them that opportunity. Similarly, as we have more students taking advanced math earlier in the middle school, they are getting through calculus as juniors, and our requirement says, still need to take another class. So while I do believe that any student who is interested in the STEM field will continue to take advanced math and science classes as they have before, this just gives them a little freedom to decide if they'd rather that be a science or math for that seventh credit. And then finally, the last change is a little bit of a different, we're not so much seeking approval for it, but putting in here, Dr. Harner's smiling at me because he knows that this was a, I was passionate about this for a while when I first learned about it. But we have a number of students as a district who we outplace for their high school, either their entire high school career or part of their high school career, because we have determined that their needs will be best met in a different placement. And when those students meet the graduation requirements at their placement, they get a diploma. And then we count them as a dropout. And no one can really quite be sure when that practice started or why that is the case. But what we're looking to do here is to say, if we as a district have placed you somewhere for your high school years, and you have earned a state diploma, so you've met the requirements, you actually have a physical diploma, even though you didn't attend school in Quakertown, you should not be counted against us as a dropout because you attained a diploma. It doesn't have much of an effect on our students because we've already allowed them to participate in graduation. They are already leaving with a diploma, so they believe they've graduated. But it really should benefit our district and our school to more accurately represent the number of students who actually do finish high school as students of Quakertown. So those are the main changes there. I do have a document linked in Board Docs that has every change, if you want to see, you know, a little bit more specific. But, so just some kind of thoughts to leave you with in terms of, and I don't know if maybe this will be something we have an opportunity to talk about it in upcoming Board Retreat, or another time that we'd like to get together, you know, who knows? But, you know, what do we think defines success for a Quakertown graduate? You know, what does that diploma mean? What should it mean? What do we want to make sure that our graduates leave knowing and being able to do? Should we think about focusing solely on credits? Or should we start to think about, and this is not something that is typically done in a lot of public schools, but should we start to think about content? Should we make sure that our students get through a certain level of content, even if that takes them an extra credit, or they can do it in one less? And that leads to the idea of differentiated diplomas. So some districts have diplomas with distinction for students who reach certain levels, and then they have a general diploma for students who meet the basic standards. And is that something that we want to look at here to recognize? You know, maybe, maybe not. And then the last idea to think about is pathways for student interest. So there are some districts, neighboring districts, who have moved to pathway models where a student may say, you know, "I want to be in the engineering pathway." And then we help guide them through which classes, not just math and science, but which electives you should take, which English would be best for you, what class can help you get on that engineering pathway. Or they might be in a communication pathway, and then we help them, guide them through taking public speaking and journalism, and, you know, whatever the courses are that might best benefit them. So those are just a couple thoughts about some things that we could consider in the future in terms of what we want our students to leave here with. So, any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Hoffman.
That completes the Superintendent's Report. Look at that.
Thank you, Dr. Harner. All right, moving right along, we move to the Student Representative, and tonight we have Ms. Nicole Chambers.
Okay. Hello, I'm Nicole Chambers. A little bit to get to know me by myself, but first I want to say thank you for letting me be the Student Representative for this Board meeting tonight. To get to know me, I'm a junior this year, and I recently was selected to be the Outstanding Student of the Month for September. I am on the girls varsity tennis team, and we actually just finished our season yesterday, suburban one-league doubles tournament here at the Tennis Zone. Long day, because as Dr. Harner said yesterday, we took the PSATs, and I did partake in them, so it was a very long day for me. I also partake in a lot of school events, clubs, activities. I really value helping out my community as much as I possibly can. I'm in Key Club. I've been in that for the past two years, I think. I help out with the Quakertown Rotary. My dad's actually on that, so I try to help out with their races. Fourth of July, I spend all day at the park. I recently joined FPLA this year, Future Business Leaders of America, and I found that out by, I attended PFEW, Pennsylvania Free Enterprise Week, this past summer. Great program. I highly recommend it to any high school student. And from that, we had a breakfast meeting, and Dr. Harner actually appointed me to this Student of the Representative for this Board meeting, and that's why I'm here. So enough about me. The real reason I'm here is to tell you guys about what's going on at the high school. So like I said, we had the PSATs yesterday, and all sophomores are required to take that, and juniors could take it if they want. They had to pay a fee of $16. Moving on to sports, our Dig Bank Night is on Monday night, and that's to fundraise money for breast cancer awareness. The girls volleyball team was raising money by selling T-shirts for the past few weeks for that. Cross-country team invitational meet at Lehigh University, I think was two weeks ago. So some of our cross-country team participated in that, and there was high schools there and colleges. Soccer, soccer has a game tonight. It's away, and their senior night is this Saturday. Our football team unfortunately lost against Upper Dublin last Friday, 14-13, close game. They're a tough team. Moving on, our homecoming dance is November 3rd, and our winter formal is still being finalized, but that date is February 2nd. Like Mr. Birch said, we have that Shakespeare in the Park on October 25th. And NHS is doing a fundraiser called 31, and whatever the amount we raise, they are going to donate their money to organization, and they're going to match it. And it's for cancer bags for cancer patients that just got a chemotherapy. I guess it was last Friday, about 150 of our high school students went to Delaware Valley University for a program called Feeding My Starving Children, and they helped package food for children in underdeveloped countries. That was a huge success, and hopefully we continue to do that in the years in the future. Moving on with the football, our band, a really good band this year, our marching band, has a competition this Saturday. It's called a, I think it's called a Yamica, something like that? Yamaha Cup. It's in Rutgers University, so they're going to participate in that on this Saturday. Let's see. I think, I think that was, oh. Well, I think Haley attended this too. A few, I guess about a week ago, a group of our students, I think with Dr. Harner, went, traveled to the state Capitol, and they met the Governor, Tom Wolf, and they met the Bucks County House of Representatives. So that was a great opportunity for them to go and do that. And just to conclude, we have a, our next home football game is this Friday, tomorrow, at 7 o'clock. We play Plymouth White Marsh, and that is a pink-out. And we're also going to have a tailgate before the game with food, drinks, music, face paint. And they're selling T-shirts to be worn at the game or in school, doing competitions, all just to, proceeds go back to pediatric cancer. So that is a big fundraiser. It'd be great if any of you guys could come out to that and support our football game. And I believe that is everything that I have for you guys tonight. And I'd just like to say thank you for letting me be your Student Representative. And there was tons of more clubs and activities always going on at our school that exceeds my five-to-10-minute speech that I have. So if you want to find out more, you could go to our Quakertown website or our Panther, Inc. newsletter.
Well done.
Thank you.
We're going to go back to you for a second, if you don't mind. You mentioned, first of all, congratulations on Student of the Month.
Oh, thank you.
That's awesome.
Can I ask, what do you do to get that?
My associate teacher, I guess teachers look at your grades and they, my associate teacher appointed me to it, so nominated me to be the Student Representative. And how I got Outstanding Student of the Month was, there's four of us, so I was the junior class, so there was freshmen, sophomores, seniors. And they look at, I guess that there's a committee, and they look at your grades, what activities, what clubs you do, and then they pick the outstanding one. So I got that somehow.
No, that's okay. PFEW, I was really interested to hear about that, and I was wondering if you could maybe speak just a little bit more about that? Because I was hoping to be able to join that breakfast with Dr. Harner. Unfortunately, I couldn't, but...
Yes, it's a really great program, and I feel like it should be advertised more in our school because... our school because not that many kids go. I mean, this year we did have a good number, I think there was eight of us that went. So there's four weeks in the summer, and you could either go to Penn College, which is the last week, which I attended, or you go to Lycoming College. You live on the campus, you have a dorm room, you have a dorm roommate all week long, and you're put with 15 random kids that you've never met in your whole entire life. And you can go with someone, like you can be roommates with your friend, but they're going to separate you because they want you to meet new people. And you basically are given, you're put in a group, and you have a failing company, failing business, and your job for that whole week is to make that business more successful. And there is a marketing team and a financial team. At the beginning of the week, you select a CEO, and you select a CFO. And I was basically a CFA, so we say I was the Chief Financial Assistant. And I was on the financial team, so we had, I think it was 12 quarters, and each quarter was three months. For three years, you had to run your company, and you had to look at reports, and there was from economy index, just numbers fluctuated, you had to figure out your advertising, your salespeople, if you should up production, if you could lower your cost, how to make more money in the end of it. And you're running against two other companies that are like, are in your division, so to say, and there's 24 companies total. And about, I think, 450 kids go each week, so it's a huge program. It's only for Pennsylvania. And it was a really great program. I walked into it kind of iffy, I was like, mm, I don't really want to go into business, but I walked out of it, and now I want to go into business. That's why I joined FPLA. And I actually want to be a market research analyst now, which is exactly what I did at PFEW. So I'm glad I went, and I'm glad, and the people I were in my group with, I still keep in touch with them today. Fortunately, they're all over Pennsylvania, so we can't see each other. But it's a great program, and if we can somehow advertise that more in a different way that's more appealing to our students, it's a really great program, and I would hope to see that number increase with our school of attending that. And, yeah, you have any other questions?
That sounds really great. Thank you for expanding on that. And just remember, never trust the salespeople, okay?
Yeah.
I'm a salesman, so I can say that. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Okay, that brings us to the standing committee reports. First one is Facilities Committee. And since Ms. Mitchell is not here tonight, I believe Mr. Jackson is prepared to give that report.
Do we want to offer our student rep the ability to bolt? If you feel you need to leave and go do your classes, please do that.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
I have homework I have to finish.
Yes.
She could stay here with our contractor and help us with our numbers for construction.
Ooh, yeah, would you like to?
We need to, we have business, we need to run better.
Just saying.
Facilities Committee met last week. There were a number of topics, but I want to start with the NIDIC renovations. You've all seen the schematics, which haven't really changed much from the exterior, but there was some discussion on the interior, and two large issues came up for discussion that the contractor, well, the project manager, I should say, Dewey is seeking some input from the full board. The committee has looked at it and made some recommendations, but I want to let everybody see what we're talking about, so I'm going to ask Jamie Lynch, our associate, to come up there and explain this issue for us. So take a look at the presentation, please.
Andy from Schrader Group has come up with some of these ideas, so she's the real funder here.
Mr. Klein, members of the board, thank you for having us tonight. My name is Daniel Hoffer with the Schrader Group. I am supported by my design team, or the design team, along with members of the administration and Mr. Godchuk, Jamie and Mike from Dewey, and Chris is hanging around as our site civil engineer. So, yes, the board, we met with the Facilities Committee last week. If you want to see that presentation, it has been posted on Board Docs if you want to have some of the detail behind the information we're going to present tonight. But what we wanted to do is just kind of give you an overview of the project. We're going to talk a little bit about the, and give you a project update, talk about the project cost history, some of the design modifications and cost reductions that we're considering as part of this phase of the project, and then the fun stuff, looking at some exterior and interior images of the building. So starting with the project update, we're in a phase of the project called Design Development. And the previous page, and I'll explain this a little bit when we get into the history of it, but this is really where we're developing design and really kind of setting the design as we move into construction documents. We've been meeting with the staff, we have our second round of meetings to go through the interior spaces, their classrooms. Our second round is on October 25th, and we've had ongoing, what we call end-user meetings. We had a meeting with the plumber, your plumbing staff, with our engineers. We need to schedule another meeting for safety and security for your Act 44 and technology. We need to schedule that meeting. So we're constantly getting information still at this point in time with your staff and with your, the various end-users. As far as the land development submissions, this is the approvals that we go through to get the project approved. We submitted a preliminary and final submission. We got comments back already. We met with the staff yesterday. Mike, myself, and Chris were involved at that meeting. We're trying to clean up all the comments, and we're planning to probably go before the Planning Commission sometime in mid-November. One of the longer lead times that we have with our permitting and approvals is the Department of Environmental Protection, and we're anticipating, that's already been submitted, and we're anticipating getting our first round of comments sometime in January. So we're all on schedule with that. Like I said, we're in the design development phase of the project. We're scheduled to complete this phase of the project on November 19th. At that point, we send our drawings and specifications to the folks at Dewey, and they have three weeks to do their design development cost estimate. That is the critical information that we need to start preparing for the Act 34 hearing. Because the building is being expanded by more than 20%, we're still, even though this is not a PlanCom project where the district is asking for reimbursement for the project from the state, because they're under a moratorium at this time and we can't, we are still subject to an Act 34 hearing, and that's a public meeting where we go to the public and talk to them about the scope and the cost of the project. And then we're planning to bid the project the end of March and give notice to proceed around May of 2019. So all of that's still on schedule, but we're going to continue to update you on that as we go through the process. Project cost history. We thought it might be good for you to see how the project is evolved from a cost standpoint. The first column is the District Y Facility Study. Some of you may remember back in 2016, Schrader Group going through all the buildings and doing a hugely comprehensive analysis and cost analysis on the building, of all the buildings in the school district. And for NIDIC, if we were simply to go in there and just renovate it as is, don't change anything for program, don't do any additions to it, the cost that was identified in that study was about $10 million. The next time there was a cost assigned to the project was before we started the actual design of the project. Nancy Yan was working, Ms. Edwards was working with various committees. The thought was, what if we just add 10 classrooms to NIDIC? What would that cost? The cost estimate that was prepared by Schrader Group added the 10 classrooms, had some site work to prepare the pad for the building addition, and knowing that there would be additional children in the building and the cafeteria in too small, the cost estimate actually had an addition of a cafeteria in there. So that square footage was translated into cost to just over $20 million. This is, again, before any design was done. As we moved into the design phases, what we call the concept phase, if you remember, there was an interest to have equity between the two larger elementary schools, the two proposed larger elementary schools, the one at Poth and the one at NIDIC. And so the design and the program for NIDIC was really trying to represent the program that's at Poth. So if you remember, we brought several options to the committee, and we settled on option D. And that added a series of different things. It added a full-size gym and stage. It added, I can't see that far away. It added, it enlarged the administration and the cafeteria. We added some small and large group instruction areas. We fully renovated the existing building that was to remain, and we did some site work that would separate the bus and vehicular traffic. So that total project cost increased to just over $28 million. When we get into the schematic design phase, that is really looking at the adjacency of all the spaces, really starting to lay out the square footages and how the different spaces relate. And that estimate was prepared by Dewey once they were on board in August of 2018. And they were looking at and comparing the cost to current costs that had been bid recently in current market conditions and looking at the soft costs. And so they were around $29.9. At that point, we also started to look at the possibility of moving the kids out of NIDIC and renovating and adding on to the building unoccupied. So those are some of the things that I've been starting to consider. We're also, because we've heard rumblings from the board that, you know, we're kind of getting concerned, this is starting to push up, are there ways that we can take a look at this and maybe reduce costs? So that's the process we're in right now. We're trying to settle all the design issues before we give it to Dewey for their cost estimating. So we're kind of up against the wall here. We're trying, again, to finish our design development drawings the middle of November, and we've got to make all these, any adjustments that are directed by the board as soon as possible, so that we can get a really good estimate when we get into design development. The other thing we wanted to show you is the program comparison between what currently exists at NIDIC and what the upgrades are as compared to what we're proposing now for NIDIC. And you can see the list, I'm not going to read them out, one, because I can't see that far away, of all the different spaces within the building. But you can see, since we are also adding additional children to this building, we are increasing the number of rooms in the building and support spaces. The current capacity is around 434 students at NIDIC. What we're proposing now in increasing the capacity is looking at four classrooms per grade level, grades one through five. We'll have two half-day kindergartens and one full-day kindergarten, as well as one preschool classroom in the building. We will have a full-size cafeteria, a full-size gymnasium with stage, and then we have all the other support spaces that are listed there. You can see the difference in the number of small group instruction spaces, and those are really kind of pullout spaces for program, for reading specialists, math specialists, that type of thing. We do have two dedicated learning support classrooms that accommodate the grade levels that are built into this program as well. Design modifications and cost reductions. Okay, so when we look at this, there's a lot of decisions that are made throughout the design development process that are relatively easy to make, they don't have any program implications that are going to affect the educational program. They are maybe cost reductions. So we brought a lot of ideas to the design team, and there are a couple of them that just weren't really interested in considering because they had program implications. If you remember, there was a learning stair that not only acted as an educational space, but was also circulation space, we're actually doing a dual function with that. That was important, that the design team felt that was needed to be kept. The other was, one of the other options was thinking about eliminating the stage between the new gym and the cafeteria. Again, we're still trying to think about that program equity with Poth, and eliminating the stage would be a deficiency as far as that program is concerned. There's other implications, if we were going to use the cafeteria as the stage, we still don't have storage, we can't do the rigging, we can't do all the other benefits associated with the stage. So that was something that we took off the table relatively quickly. And then we had cost reductions that we are just going to implement because they either have a positive effect or no educational effect to the educational program. And I just listed a few, we just listed a few of those, one of which is relocating the students and renovating the building unoccupied. We had initially thought about having a folding partition between the stage and the gym, which we're still going to maintain, but we also had a folding partition between the stage and the cafeteria. And we really thought that was a little bit redundant after talking to Scott. We have plenty of other spaces where there could be large group instruction, where there could be, especially at the stage next to the gym, where you would have large groups coming in and having presentations. So we think we have ample opportunities throughout the building for large group and presentation, so that wasn't something that was really going to be detrimental to the educational program. We continue to look at casework reductions in the classroom, that's an ongoing process. We have already cut a lot of concrete curbs that we had originally proposed on the site, so that'll be some cost reductions. And then we'll either reduce or eliminate some of the bulkheads or soffits, which are kind of these things in the corridors. Again, no effect to the educational program. Other design adjustments, that's been reviewed with the Facility Committee when considering toilet room design and gender-neutral implications. We did review that with the Facility Committee and came up with a design where we have a boys' and girls' toilet room, all of which will have just toilets in them, and then another auxiliary toilet room that will be used for either family or faculty, or, you know, we're not going to call attention to it, it's just another private toilet room. Things that are still under review, that we're still waiting to see what the cost-benefit implications are, providing a flat EPDM roof over the gym versus a pitch roof with asphalt shingles, and that's the new gym. Over the existing classroom wing, considering whether keeping the roof as it is with a EPDM roof or doing a pitch roof with asphalt shingles in that location as well. We're looking at the extent of proposed demolition and new construction, and that's just something that continues to evolve as we go through this process. We'll continue to look at any cost-saving measures to reduce curtain wall versus storefront. And we're also looking at steel frame construction versus major bearing and what the implications are with cost and schedule. Other cost increases and reductions that are anticipated since the schematic design estimate was done, we know now that we needed to add another stormwater basin for stormwater management, there's really not much we can do about that. We do have the kitchen design in now and a cost estimate associated with that, which is a little higher than what it was originally estimated at the schematic design budget. And we know, so that's some increases, but we also have some decreases that the abatement numbers that are coming in are less than what we had at the schematic design estimate. So you can see that we're kind of in an evolving timeframe where we're really kind of, things are going up, things are going down, but that's all part of what's going to culminate in Dewey's estimate when they get into design development. Now, some of those are easy to palette, but now we're kind of getting into those design adjustments where we're coming to you and asking for direction. Some are easier to palette, some are things that you don't have to decide right now that are actually bid as alternates that you would need to design at bid day. That'll be another discussion later on. We have a short list here, but there's two cost reductions that we have on the table, and I'm going to show you some plans that describe it in a little bit more detail here on the next slide. But the two things that we've considered that we're bringing to you, the board, the first one being an 1,100-square-foot reduction at the proposed gym. When we originally designed the gym, we made it a little bit larger with a thought that maybe some outside community venues might want to come in and use the gym. The square-foot reduction is actually making it equitable to what the Poth Elementary School Gym is now. So again, that equity factor. No impact to the educational program, but we wanted to bring it before you for your direction. The other one might be a little bit more painful, and I'll show you on the plan, is reducing some square footage in the new classroom addition. We're not reducing the number of spaces, we're just reducing the square footage of some small group and large group spaces in that new addition, and I'll show you what that looks like in a second here. Like I said, at bid day, we'll have a series of alternates for you to make some decisions. We'll have those vetted out when we go out to bid, but one of them that we're talking about is the existing wood floor in the cafeteria. We can do an option in an alternate where we either replace that wood floor with another material, or we reuse the wood floor and refinish it and kind of have a material that's left over from the old building. Little bit of nostalgia there. Another option would to provide some ceramic tile, wainscote in the corridors. Right now, we have a tile from, several different kinds of tiles, depending on what era the addition was done in the building, that we can't match. If we're doing any changes to the wall or we're putting in an opening, we cannot match the existing tile. So we're going to, what we call reskin, the existing finish, meaning the ceramic tile. We can either do that with a plastic laminate that's like a wood finish, or we can do it in a ceramic tile. So we'll have a couple of different alternates to show you for that. Another thing we may bring to the board is eliminating one or both of the dormers on the new two-story addition, and we'll come to you with probably a variety of other finish alternates that will be determined as we go through the design, construction documents, and interior design of the building. So looking at the reductions that we're asking for direction tonight, this is a plan of the proposed gym, proposed new gym. The area shown in bay... The area shown in beige is the footprint of the reduction shown by eliminating the 1,100 square feet to match POF. The area in gray is the amount of square footage reduced from the original design. It's pretty self-explanatory. The next image here is looking at the layout of the current plan, and the area in red is the area of possible square footage reduction. And basically, what we would do is just take that wall and just push it up. And you see, we have two small group instructions on either side. Each one of those small group instruction areas is 575 square feet. There's a folding partition between each of the SGIs with the possibility if, for instance, there needed to be a larger group in that space, or if there was a larger class size that might come in that might exceed the four classrooms per grade level in one year or two, that could actually be opened up as a general classroom. So that was the planning of it. And just, I'm going to point over on this screen because this is where it shows up. But this learning support classroom is on each floor, and then in this, in the original plan, this is a faculty planning area. You can see the kind of odd configuration of that faculty planning area there. Same thing on the second floor. In the proposed square foot reduction plan, you can see that we've turned the SGIs. We're still maintaining the same number of SGIs, but each SGI, small group instruction, would be 400 square feet. We would still have the opportunity to open up that partition and make it a general classroom at 800 square feet, which is fine for a general classroom. So we haven't lost that programmatic issue. Basically, the large group instructional usable area is the same in the previous diagram. If you notice the last plan, and I'm going back here, there's kind of a corridor shown here. So the usable space here is really not changed in this proposed plan. We also are maintaining that large learning support classroom on each floor, and instead of having two smaller faculty planning rooms on each floor, we're showing one larger faculty planning on the first floor. And then on the second floor, we can capture another small group instruction area. Actually, it's big enough to be a full-size classroom, but it offers a lot more opportunities for the educational program. We can also capture a small group instruction area at the top of the learning stairs as well, and I can get what we call Act 34 capacity, which helps with your Act 34 hearing. So that's, that's the, the option that we are looking for some direction on, whether or not you feel comfortable reducing that square footage or not.
Can I ask a question at this point?
Sure, while we're here.
Okay. Do you have any cost figures for those reductions, both for the gym and then the, the two-story SGI and LGI modifications?
We're looking at, like I said, 1,100 square feet at the gym and about 2,800 square feet for the LGI and SGI cost reduction. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Jamie Lynch.
On the gym reduction, you're looking at about $4 million for that 1,100 square feet, whatever. On the other one, we're reducing by 39?
2,800.
2,800 square feet, I'm sorry. I added the two together. So use $260 square foot, and that's just under $1 million. So, you know, we're, between the two, we're looking at...
So the two combined, about a million?
Yeah, excuse me, we're looking at about $1 million in savings.
In construction costs.
The presentation last week at the facilities committee was attended by four of the board members. So there were a couple of people who were up to speed on this presentation, several of us were, who haven't heard it before. The key issue with the gym, the original proposal had approximately a high school-sized gym, maybe not exactly that, but the proposal was, well, let's take it down to what we have at POF. I mean, POF doesn't have that big a gym, so let's take it down to what POF is. And that was, that's the reduction they're recommending right now. So it makes perfect sense to the facilities committee to approve that direction as far as the gym is concerned. There was discussion to make it even smaller, eliminate the stage in the cafeteria, nobody liked that, like it was already not wanted. So we're only talking about taking it down to the same size as POF on the gym and saying yea or nay about that. And the second one with the small group classrooms, my biggest concern, and I'm glad they're both here tonight, is small group instructional classrooms typically are for special education purposes. So I don't know, Mrs. Palone, have you seen this option? Okay. I'm a fan of that option because it gives extra classrooms for small group instruction, plus it has the dividers down the middle to make them smaller when needed or larger when needed. Plus, it saves almost a million dollars. So I'm a fan of it. I'm not, I think the facilities committee at the time was, we didn't, we didn't know enough. So that's why I was asking if Mrs. Palone, if you're comfortable with it, Mr. Gaudchall, if they're comfortable with it, I see no reason not to go forward. And again, the committee is asking the full board to support that.
And are these small group instructions, the way they would be shrunk up in the alternate option, is that enough space?
Are you asking?
I am asking, yeah.
Yes, I do, I do think so. You know, I was nervous, of course, when I heard the word reduction and removing small group instructional spaces, because that is where students have the opportunity to meet with teachers. You know, either catch up or excel their current goals. So, but what you saw there was some creative movement. There are still four small group instructional spaces on each, on each floor there, so eight total. They just shifted and got a little bit smaller. We still have that opportunity to make this reduction, and we still have that opportunity in the middle with the large group gathering space to gather a grade level or two grade levels at a time. A little bit smaller, loss of the reduction of that corridor across the top, but we still have that opportunity with that space.
So if, as a general comment, would you say that this was just space reduction, not classroom reduction?
Space reduction, not classroom reduction. I would, I would, I, you know, again, as the principal, I'm looking for any flexible space that will allow us to enhance the 21st century learning environment. We don't know where we're going to be in 15 years, 20 years. We want to make sure that this structure allows us to grow into it. So that's, trying to keep that frame in that lens, and I do think that this option still allows us to have.
You do? So you're comfortable with it?
I, I'm comfortable, you know? I, I don't want to say I'm a little nervous with the loss of space, but at first, I was a lot more nervous when I saw this model and I talked to the teachers about this, and everybody seemed comfortable. I do, I am comfortable with it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gaudchall.
So again, the committee is on board with both, and does anybody here object to giving them direction right now, which is what they need to go?
I like the reduction in the cost.
Trim off another foot off the side of that gym, will you?
So the, the direction then from the committee, supported by the board, is to make both those changes?
Well, I think we need to take a vote on that.
Did we need to roll, hold on to such a thing?
To Mr. Kern's point...
I would say so, only because you're giving direction on a major project.
Correct. Right.
Yeah, to Mr. Kern's point a couple of weeks ago, are there any other items, like with finishes that you were talking about, that could be taken a look at to further reduce costs? Because I think you would say with the high school, it's a beautiful high school, but are there other areas that could be taken a closer look at?
I think that was in the list of future...
Absolutely. But they don't have to be made, the decisions don't need to be made tonight.
Okay. And then I just had one other question, and totally unrelated to this. I know at the beginning of the year, I think the baseball coach had come in and talked about drainage with the field being poor. Can the dirt from this project be repurposed to help the baseball field, like just as an idea for the future?
It's, you talk about a drainage thing, you've got our civil engineers here, there's a lot to what you're proposing that can't be answered sitting here.
No, I'm saying as an idea.
It certainly could be looked at if that's something we want to do.
Okay, thanks.
In, in the past, like when we built the stadium behind the high school, we went out to all the municipalities and got their rocks. So we've, we'll value engineer that one and beg and borrow for the, for the baseball field if that's something the board wants to do back on the baseball field.
So you were a geologist?
No, sir.
Even things, just to highlight the, I know it's, should care about large sweeping changes that make huge cost savings, but the types of things that, that came to mind in looking at what, what kind of looks like a Taj Mahal high school is when you're describing the, something on the insides about old ceramic tiles, not being able to match it. And, you know, when I work in Guatemala with really poor places that build schools and I help build stuff, you know, the kids are there to learn and have all kinds of great things, and whether it's a beautifully, that's, that's the thing I struggle with is, you know, hey, we could spend a ton of money making beautiful, you know, we could get tiles from Italy or something and make them all beautiful, or we could just paint over it, or do whatever because the kids go through and they're gone. And although I know the teachers probably want beautiful places, and the principal does, but it's that sort of thing that, that, just like when you buy a house, you know, you can get the base model or you can get, you know, Italian marble. So it's those kinds of things that maybe seem minutia, but over, you know, maybe you can squeeze a million dollars out of making different quality choices.
Sir, this is not about quality, though. Just want to make sure you understand that. You're talking about square footage for classroom space.
I understand that. These things are big things. I'm just talking about the other things that...
Oh, okay, okay.
Aesthetics.
There's all kinds of stuff that end up ballooning costs, like the casework. I assume you mean, you know, we could have bookmarked matched wonderful, you know, fiddle-back maple, or we could have, you know, some composite, you know, with, with paper veneer. So that's what I'm talking about, and stuff like that.
The reason we're coming to you with these changes now is that square footage reductions is going to be the bigger ticket items in reducing costs.
Right.
The finishes are going to reduce costs, you know, depending on what quality or what type of finishes you're providing, but it's not going to significantly reduce your cost.
Right. It's not a big bang for the buck.
Not a big bang for your buck, exactly.
One, one other question. The square footage reductions in the classrooms that are up there right now, does that at all affect the number of students that would be able to attend the school?
No. Those are all pull-out spaces. Basically, the capacity of the school is determined by the number of general classrooms that you have in the building.
This proposal would be small group and large group instructional spaces, the classroom spaces.
Do not change.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I was clear.
Just for, just for clarification there, if you go back to your, to your other picture, when you collapse it down, you see how the SGIs get smaller, and the SGI could become a classroom. You have the two, you have the wall between the two, correct? So you are losing the opportunity to have four extra classrooms here.
No, there's a dividing, in the old, original plan, there's a dividing partition here, so that could be a full-size classroom.
Yes.
That classroom, it would be 1,100 square feet, over 1,100 square feet. In the revised plan, we just rotated the classroom, we still have that dividing partition, and the total square footage is 800 square feet. So it's still a full-size classroom size.
The partition goes up and down.
Yep.
I have another goofy question.
Yeah.
How many of these classrooms will be empty on day one of the opening, of the opening of the school, because we don't have 600 kids?
All right, can you answer it?
Like, like in other words, hey, we don't even need the second, another goofy thing in Guatemala, hey, we're building a school, you know what? And you see weird rebar coming out the top, and it's there for three years until you need a second floor. So another strange question, but maybe we don't even need the second floor until two years from now, and what's, what's the implication of delaying building some of the stuff?
It's an enrollment question, Ms. Edwards.
Okay, and remember, the way that we reallocated students with the closing up to Hickon Valley has everything really tight. And so what we said to the community was that when the Nightig addition was finished, we would redistrict in order to more equitably allocate our students among the different schools. And, and so I would anticipate that most of the building would, would be used, yeah.
Plus, we would have 150 less, or 160 less students at the elementary level because of our continuing declining enrollment.
Did we vote?
No, 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 no. There hasn't been, are you finished with your presentation now?
Well, I was going to show you some pretty pictures.
You want to show us the pretty pictures and then...
Yeah, I'll do it quickly.
Why don't you just give them a time to look at that on the document?
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
So as, as the facilities representative, I will make the motion that we give direction to our, or, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to ask a question. Do we vote on the two design development decisions together, or should they be separated?
Well, I think if you hear there's a different vote, or people are concerned about not doing it together, then do it separately. If you're not hearing that, then I would say that you can do it together.
Okay. Is, is anybody concerned, or you're leaning? No? Okay.
So the, the motion is that we...
We need a motion now to approve the design development decision here to reduce the gym and reduce the square footage of the two-story classroom wing.
So moved.
Second. Jackson. Mr. Akman, what's you seconded that? Okay. Discussion.
One small thing, sir, just to get Jamie on the record. We had a reduction in costs, and so what do you, what's the projected cost that you think we're going to be at? So we have, the board here is a ballpark. To fill in that, go back to your first slide, or one of your slides.
He said under a million. It's got to be under a million.
No, no, it's got to be under that, a lot.
29 million.
Yeah, so you go back to, there you go, right to that, see that right column? That's what I'm looking for.
Right, so between the two suggestions, I mentioned that we're approaching a million dollars in square footage savings. And what Danny identified in her presentation is that we have the up and the down. So we've added a stormwater basin out front, we've added the entire replacement of the water utility service. So when I do the design development estimate in November, I would expect that this savings, along with the savings of relocating the children...
That, that was my question.
...is going to show itself at that, at that point in time. So both of those things are, are on the table, along with some of the additions that we've had in...
Jamie, in very general terms, would it be a fair assumption to say that what we're going to be voting on shortly, you said is just under a million?
Mm-hmm.
And a relatively similar figure for relocating the students is what my understanding is, roughly a million. So we would say that that 29.9 number would then be 2 million less?
That's, that's certainly what we're shooting for.
But that doesn't, he just, he just stated that there was increasing costs.
Right. The, the opportunity is there, and, you know, without me doing a updated cost estimate every day...
And I'm just talking about those two things, the relocation and what we're voting on tonight, because in the presentation, there's things that some are going up, some are going down. We'll get more information on that later.
The, the kitchen item, for instance, is roughly, you know, approaching a $200,000 addition. So now I have to take that off of your 2 million, the water line, the, the...
Retention basin.
Stormwater basin.
But we're still under 30.
But there's also other savings. Do I think that your cost is going down? You know, we saw the trend, you've seen the trend, where we were at 28, then 29, then 29, 999. You know, clearly, we needed to do some things, both for market conditions and also to provide you with savings that you requested. And so this, these are the times to make these bold passes at it. First was the children, that was a big issue, and it relieves the phasing issues. One of the things that that does also, and what we're trying to show with this slide, is the increased value for the same cost that's been built into Nightig. And a great example of that is with the children in the building and us doing the renovation while the kids were in, that impacts our ability to provide brand-new mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems. Somehow, I have to work around the systems that are there, I have to keep systems in operation, I have to go from each phase and cobble them together. Here, and I've mentioned this before, with the children out of the building, it's new electrical from the pole to the transformer to the switchgear to the outlet in the classroom everywhere for what is going to be the same cost. So that's, it's kind of a value add, HVAC, same, same thing. I don't have the restriction of going from phase to phase and compromising somehow what I do with HVAC because I have to deal with an occupied school while I do construction. I know it's getting gutted and replaced with a complete system. So that's one of the benefits. Does that increase the cost a little bit? Sure.
And it reduces the schedule too, right?
Well, the schedule's the big thing, is, you know, we're still at 15 months, we go in, you know, we make the schedule that Danny identified, and, you know, we're bidding it at a timeframe where contractors can get ready to go, and as soon as you move out, we move in. And as soon as you move out, we move in and go at it from an abatement standpoint. Instead of going around the building and doing that work, we're looking at, because that scope is decreased, we're looking at a way to get in and there's some tile that needs to be removed. We might do that over a break.
Was that the abatement reduction that Danny referenced?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I had carried a large budget only because we had not done the investigation yet. And fortunately, we did the investigation and the numbers are much, much lower. So that savings, there's a savings. Stormwater up, abatement down. All of that should show itself when we do our estimate.
How much was your square foot? Yeah, like you keep throwing 300, you keep throwing a number out there for square foot and I forgot it.
For, for new construction, so the new addition for square footage, we've been using about $260 a square foot for, for just the building. The site work is on top of that. So when you, our reduction on the SGI side is in the new building. Our reduction on the gym is in the new building. So if we went someplace and reduced the amount of renovation we were doing, if we left the tile on the wall, for instance, that number for renovation square footage is usually somewhere around 140 or so dollars a square foot. You know, that, that's a way to decrease that number. But again, these are the big, sweeping, big dollar items that you have the ability to, you know, really take a chunk out of the rest, everything that we do, whether it's finishes or, or anything else, you know, it's in the, all of a sudden, it's in the tens of thousands of dollars of savings as opposed to, you know, a million or three-quarters of a million or a quarter of a million with the gym. So I'm sorry, I can't give you the crystal ball savings immediately on where we stand today. That'll be coming and I know you'll demand to see the savings that I keep talking about.
So we can't celebrate yet?
No.
That's what that was.
Well, the Eagles game hasn't been played yet, so you can't celebrate.
Well, not either.
Okay.
Said the Redskins fan, yeah. Other, other questions, curiosities, concerns? Happy to try to answer for you.
Anyway, you'll be able to shave off like 10 mil from this project?
Danny, it's up to you.
We got to, we got to vote on the motion or?
Yeah, we're still discussing, so.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
And just, I know you've said it before, so the 2,800 feet that are being eliminated, it doesn't affect the number of students that'll be in the building or anything like that? It's just space that was there that discovered is no longer needed or just reorganized?
It's the exact same space. It's been rotated 90 degrees and there are small group rooms that have made, been made slightly smaller but not too small and they're still designed for the purpose that they had before. And if you eliminate the wall that separates them, you still have a full-size operating classroom.
Okay, should this be a roll call vote?
Unless you hear an a, I wouldn't make a roll call.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. You have your direction.
Thanks very much. We'll continue working hard for you.
Thank you.
Continuing on, didn't realize it was going to take that long for that portion. I apologize. Trying to go quickly here. If you hear anything you want additional input on, please let me know. We also, we reviewed the agreement of sale with Faith Christian Academy as that is a real estate transaction. I'll not go into it here because we do not have something in front of us to vote on. But people were at the committee who were in favor, those who were a little less so. So there was discussion, but we're, I believe, is that up for a vote next meeting? That official?
So, yes, so right now, we have a draft. We're still ironing out some of the details of that. Once our, the district and Faith Christian are happy with the details in it, then the goal would be to have the board vote on it on October 25th.
So that's hopefully coming forth for a full vote.
Yes.
Next meeting. There was discussion about a five-year maintenance plan. There was talk previously about the Schrader Group's plan that gave us a heads-up of what we've been working on so far to address a lot of the maintenance issues. Dewey's going to come, we were asking Dewey to come up with a more targeted, detailed five-year plan that just doesn't list everything but puts it in an order to fix. One of the good things about this is that we're anticipating that the cost for this, for them to prepare this is going to be offset by the savings we received to some degree in relocating the kids because their cost for the management has been reduced such that they can cover a portion of, well, they can cover this, this study entirely through a small portion of that saving. So it's not like it's, it's not going to cost us anything for them to do this report. The, if you recall, the legislature passed a law about lead testing at everybody's school. You either do it or you have a public meeting explaining why you're not going to do it. We shopped out some lead testing agencies. We expected a certain cost. This one company came in significantly lower, such that we feel, the committee felt, or the administration backed up by the committee, felt it was worth doing every single school in our district this year and then going to a three-year cycle. I don't, I don't, I don't see anything to vote on this tonight. Is that also going to be next week or next meeting?
I don't actually think there's going to be anything to vote on. It was more informational. We already have a, a relationship with that company. It's.
It was like 3,600 bucks for them to test every single school in our district. So it was like almost nothing. So it was, go ahead and do it. There was, there were also, there are another testing for mold that was going to happen as well because we had a lot of rain apparently this year. Someone told me, I didn't know that, but. I know. And then hopefully, we keep hearing about the punchless from the high school, hopefully that'll be done by, I would, I would like to say by the end of the year, but I'm hoping, you know, so just saying, they're working on it.
Hope is not a strategy.
We did, we did get, we, we did get somebody's estimate of how long it would take, but if that actually came true, I think we, they would have been done by now. So I'm not sure if they're done by now, but I think there's a couple of things outstanding.
Yeah, some of the items on the list have already been complete that I think is in board docs. Mr. Bolts, that's one of his priorities is to keep working with the architectural studios and the other individuals that are involved to, to get these things resolved.
And that completes the facilities report.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Moving right along to the Quakertown Community Education Foundation report. Again, Mr. Jackson.
And I'm going to pump this one to Dr. Hoffman because I was unable to attend that meeting which was just held yesterday.
Great, thank you. So we did meet as a board and had a quorum for the first time in a couple of meetings. So that was exciting. We were actually able to get a few things passed. The summer was difficult time for us. We addressed a, a couple of housekeeping items in terms of fundraising. So if you have been around with the district for a while, you know that the Education Foundation used to have some large events. They had a 5K for a number of years and then they also had a golf outing. And with, with stopping both of those events, it's been more difficult to raise money. So we're looking at some potential ways that we might be able to do some fundraising. So be on the lookout for that in the next couple of months. We also addressed some of our mini-grants from teachers. I mean, a number of items that came in for approval and looking at a new way of doing our approval. We're working through my office to make sure that we are purchasing equipment that can be used in the classrooms and is appropriate and fits with the curriculum, which has been a very nice addition. And then also working with Gary to make sure that he's out in the classrooms to actually showcase what the teachers are getting for the mini-grants so that hopefully we can build some positive, positive press with that. And then finally, we spent some time talking about our artists in residence, which I believe Dr. Herner also shared with the board. So Arla Patch is a local artist from Quakertown who is going to be coming in and working with all of our students, thanks to the Quakertown Education Foundation, and hopefully a grant, fingers crossed, to help pay for the rest of it. And she will be working in all of our buildings, doing presentations at every level. And then at the high school level and the middle school level, she'll actually be doing some after-school events with students where they can sign up and come in and actually work directly with her to try to create a piece in her, in her style, which is coil drawing. So she uses clay to roll into small coils and then creates different art with that. So if you'd like to come and see any of her presentations, you have a list and you can just let us know so that we can let the building know to expect you.
Thank you, Dr. Hoffman. And since you mentioned Gary in, in your.
I did.
Thing, I, I would like to let everyone know that our very own communications director has two published articles in this week's Herald. So, you know, Gary's not just another pretty face. So, well done, Gary. It was a story about our students' visits up to Harrisburg to see Governor Wolf and then also the PFEW that our student representative spoke of earlier this meeting. So nicely done, Gary. Thank you, Dr. Hoffman. The Education Curriculum Committee report. Mr. Anderson.
Dr. Hoffman gave a very complete report before. I have nothing to add to that.
Okay. Moving on to the public comment on fiscal items being presented for a vote tonight. Any public comment? Okay, we'll move on to the fiscal consent agenda. First is to approve A-plus DJ photo booth contract for the homecoming in 2018. Next is an agreement with Pell Industries for the licensing of selling Quakertown Community School District merchandise at Target for a one-year period. And C is to approve an American Airlines contract for the spring 2019 high school band trip. Do I have a motion to approve the fiscal consent agenda as proposed?
So moved.
Mr. Jackson, a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Anderson, discussion?
Oh, yeah. So I would like to first talk about the Pell Industries agreement. Who, who brought this to the board to put it on the agenda? I was curious.
Administration, sir.
And did they receive a nice fax that was worded really nicely and put it on the agenda? How did this go down?
How, how did this particular?
Yeah, how was the introduction to this company? How did it go down?
How did it went down? It came from a, the company to the administration two years ago? Two years ago, a year and a half ago? Exactly, when, when do you take it? You see, you know, did all the research?
Well, the, the current one is a, just a renewal from the existing. So I'm not sure how the existing came to be, but it, that was two years ago that the original contract was on, on agenda for the board to approve and they did.
And, and so what have our royalties been to date with this contract?
I did put a spreadsheet in board docs for the board to see. For this one, I think it's maybe $100 last year is what the district made in revenues. It's minimal.
Right, I, I know. You know, I have a lot of concerns about their, their website, for example, as Rob, my fellow board member here, pointed out in an email to the board. The website is hugely incomplete. There's swaths of company information literally just missing. I did some basic Google research. It seems like that all they do is fish. They're fishing for these rights to have all these schools' rights to print their logo. There's no say in the letter that our stuff's going to be sold at Target. It says companies like Target want to sell our stuff. There's no promises or commitment that they're even going to print one shirt with our logo on it. And, and what are the odds that they're going to? What, what says they can't print our logo on something we don't want it on? Nothing. This, this blanket agreement, this half a page, I mean, it really doesn't leave us any rights other than, yeah, you'll send us a check if you sell some stuff with our logo on it. There's no commitment that they're actually going to sell anything. $100, it's a renewal. I thought this was a brand-new thing. I have a lot of concerns about waiving our, you know, giving them the right to print our logo on something. We don't know anything about them.
Okay.
How does this manifest itself to the average student body? Like, how do they see it?
So we actually have relationships with three different companies. This is one. The other is called Ohio Pile. I believe they sell in Giant and Rite Aid. This one sells in Target in Quakertown. And then we have another one, Jostens, which is on our district website on the, I think it's actually on the high school page. Well, Jostens also does our caps and gowns, our yearbook, those types of things for the district. There was a pre-existing relationship with them. So they're, they're the third company. That one's primarily student body. It was actually, I believe, the administration at the high school entered into that relationship with that company based on student want. They want things with Quakertown logos and there's no place you can get that. These two are more for community, so they're Target, Giant, and, and Rite Aid.
So I, I want to keep these separate because I have concerns about both and I don't want to intermix the both of them. As far as the Pell stuff goes, it doesn't say what they're going to print our stuff on. I have a lot of concerns with just signing this and, and I think the other board members may want to look at this. It's our responsibility to know more about this company before we sign off on this again.
Mr. Shuck, can I have a question? I have a question. How much time have you spent researching this?
I, I found out this week that there was a concern at the board level and spent significant amount of time looking into the companies. I spoke to representatives from Ohio Pile and Pell Industries. I did not speak to Jostens, but I did speak to the high school administration about that relationship.
And we made $100 on this last year, roughly?
On that one, yes. About $100 in Ohio Pile. I believe our relationship with Ohio Pile goes back to like 2007, so over 11 years, $1,700 is what we've received from them.
So in my opinion, the time you spent researching it, we've already spent more than that $100.
Probably for this year because I did make a call to Mr. Garten as well, which will be included in that.
My suggestion on this is let's pull this from the vote. You can make a motion to do that and, and we simply will not vote on it. I really don't think this is worth our time to spend a lot of, I mean, you obviously have concerns.
Please some time to talk about the Jostens story, then?
If, if, if you want to talk about that, that's fine. I, I just think that we have more important things right now. If you're.
Okay, I don't need to have this all play out if, if.
No, no, if you're concerned about the, you know, the Pell, we'll just drop it.
I would like, can I make a motion now?
Please.
I would like to make a motion to remove the Pell Industries from our agenda, our signing off on it.
Do we have a second? Okay, Mr. Jackson. All in favor, oh, wait a minute. We're just pulling that, so we're not going to vote on it. That's it. Yep, we're, that's done. Okay, so.
If the vote on removing that item from your consent agenda.
Yes. All in favor of removing that from the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. So that's done. Okay, so we'll go back to the fiscal consent agenda without the agreement with Pell Industries, which we've already had a motion for, and a second. Any further discussion? Yes, I did. Okay. All in favor of the fiscal consent agenda, less the Pell agreement, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Which brings us to the public comment on the human resources items being presented for a vote tonight. Any public comment? No? Okay. The human resources consent agenda. We have the employees' contracts and salary list, professional staff, unit pay, support staff, supervisory and technology staff, substitute staff. Do I have a motion to accept the human resources consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Akmanowicz, second?
Second.
Mr. Kern, discussion?
Just have one question about the way the agenda was prepared in one regard. The, the executive content includes a salary summary for the board. That salary summary includes, I believe, salaries for everybody on staff, almost, for the most part. Aren't those public records?
Yes, staff salaries are, are public record. Anybody could.
So is, I'm just saying, is there a reason this wasn't put in the public content?
It's just the way it's been done for as many years as I can recall. That's where it's been put. So it's just a product of, that's how it's always been done.
Just as a, you know, I'm thinking sunshine and all that kind of stuff. To me, it seems like if it's a public thing, even though it may be salary and people may be concerned, it's public record. I think we should put it in the public content section next if we do this again.
Sir, I have no problem with that. We'll just move it over. There's multiple ways people can get that information right now.
True.
As you know.
Okay. A quick question about the resignations, the two resignations. Did they, did they resign because they were retiring? Any, did they? I'm just kind of curious, is it temperature, are they going to a different school? Do they, do they curse on their way out the door?
So I just want to make sure with Mr. Garten, it's not something that's personnelic and.
I can...
I mean, obviously, if they express to you the reason why they were resigning, that's not something confidential unless it's something that relates to a health condition or something.
Then I would refrain from commenting unless it's an executive session.
Okay. Thanks.
Any further discussion?
I just had, not related to the vote, but do we do anything as far as just highlighting the, not only the W2s that people make, but also like the benefits, like a compensation statement as far as, here's what you make, here's what district pays as far as retirement benefits are concerned, or the costs covered for overall benefits on an individual basis? Like, hey, Rob, here's yours. Hey, Mr. Kern, here's yours.
Yes and no. They don't have a direct letter, per se, other than a salary letter, but anybody can go on their, onto our intranet, our keynet, we call it, and they can see all of their information on there. So we don't directly send them a letter.
What, like, is my individual one there, or is it like a general?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yep.
Okay. Thanks.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on, public comment on the Office of Teaching and Learning items presented for a vote tonight. Okay, the Office of Teaching and Learning Consent Agenda consists of the comprehensive K-12 school counselor plan for 2018 and 2019. Do I have a motion to approve the Office of Teaching and Learning Consent Agenda item as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Kern, do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Akmanowicz, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Information items. There's a parent safety committee update on board docs with the minutes if you choose to look at that, and also the board briefing book is out there. Let's move us on to board new business. Do we have any new business?
I have an item. We talked, I guess, two meetings ago about Army recruiters coming and making a presentation to us. I thought the board had more or less agreed, but I said I should bring it up. And new business. I was on an educator's tour with the Army, and there are all kinds of advantages to kids. And the recruiters say that basically they have to sneak around, and they would like to be able to make a public presentation about it. And so I was asking if this board would agree to have a public presentation made to us by the Army recruiters about the value and the benefits of students going in Army, Army Reserve. So that was all.
Okay. I recall we had some discussion on that, and I thought that everybody was more or less okay with that as far as... Mr. Garten, do we need to make a motion to have that be done?
Direct the administration to make the opportunity that a presentation be made.
They're going to present to us at the board level, right?
Correct.
Okay.
They're going to come here and do a presentation for us.
Heck, I don't need a motion for that.
Okay.
See, that's what you want. I thought the issues were more access to students, not to the board.
No, no, just us so we have a reason, so we can have it.
Be more than happy. Which service branch would you like to have?
Well, I...
Okay, okay. Well, I'll figure something out and bring something back. I thought some of the discussion you shared with me and maybe some Lisa and some others that were about access to the students, because I've heard that concern by many or others.
Yeah, I know, I know.
And just what I'm talking about, the access for the recruiters in our buildings have been limited just as a college would have. They get one shot. And then they have the college fair that they come in in March? Jason, March? And they get a table just like a college would. The recruiters and the academies and all that. And so they don't get the one shot. And I know some other districts, they allow them to set up a table during the lunch hour.
I was not a huge fan of that. I was not a huge fan of that.
Understand, and previous, not the previous board, but maybe a couple of boards back, that was what their feeling was, and that hasn't changed since.
Okay, so you'll go ahead and arrange for the presentation?
Come in here, that'd be great.
Very good.
Another issue of new business, if I might. The administration's working hard on the budget. We're not really thinking about the budget till January. That's usually when we kick in the budget cycle. But at the same time, we talked sparingly, or kicked around last meeting or before, about where our thoughts were, because at least I had mentioned, and somebody else might have mentioned, what the Act One index was when it came out. In order to help the administration know where we stand, it's my belief that sticking to Act One or below this year is the right way to go. I'm not sure if everybody agrees with that, but I'd like to make a motion, if appropriate, right now, that, you know, we usually do this in January, but again, to give the administration direction right now, I'd like to make the motion that we limit ourselves to not going above the Act One. In other words, we pass that resolution right now rather than waiting until January. So that's my motion.
We have a motion on the table?
Hold on a second. Mr. Anderson's looking for clarification. I think Act One was 2.3 or 2.3 without exceptions?
2.3, but because of our poverty level, we're 2.7.
So it's 2.7 would be the maximum increase we could get?
Given full information, what's the exception total? What would that be?
So we actually did a preliminary calculation to see what we would qualify for, and it's not a hard number because we don't have all of our audited numbers for this year yet. But we don't believe we would qualify for little to none in terms of exceptions, less than $100,000. Now, again, that's a preliminary number. We'll recalculate that once we have our final audited numbers from last year. As the state gives you a spreadsheet on how to calculate that.
When's the audit done? And submitted to the board in November?
Sir Alson, is that November?
They're finishing up their work in the next couple weeks, and they should go and forth. So technically, by December, if they really need to have it done, but hopefully by the end of November.
But again, that's one of the reasons that we, if we're looking for exceptions, we pass the resolution in January. What I'm trying to say, I think we were all in agreement, even though it was just preliminary discussion, that we weren't going to go above Act One this year. And I'm trying to give the administration direction because last year we had a lot of comments from citizenry who had the impression we had a range of zero to six, and the administration was trying to juggle that number. Well, you know, let's lock ourselves in at 2.7 or less right now is what my suggestion is.
They may not even have an option, right?
Potentially. So the plan was on October 25th at the Finance Committee meeting, one of our topics was going to be to discuss the Act One index. The board can make a motion at any point in time between now and, I believe, the end of January to opt out of the Act One exceptions. So, but we won't know for another maybe month what our hard numbers are in terms of what we would even qualify for. Our preliminary numbers suggest little to nothing. Even if we're slightly off, it's still a little more to nothing, according to the numbers we calculated.
So we're talking about a number of $100,000 if we went for the exceptions?
It's relatively irrelevant.
Correct.
Discussion right now, right? So I say we...
Doesn't that kind of limit the budget?
I don't think we need to do it.
Mr. Jackson has made a motion. Do we have a second?
I had a question. I'm sorry. Wait for the discussion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Anderson, okay. Go ahead.
So my question is, if the guidance is 2.7, does that limit the budget process as far as the ceiling of where the starting point is and then a final ending point?
So if the board approved that, yeah, we would be kept at 2.7 because you'd be opting out of looking for or going after exceptions.
But even if we pass the exceptions, the number that we're giving by the administration as what we would get if we went for those exceptions is about $100,000. I don't see the point. There's no reason not to cap it now and give them clear direction. 2.7 is your target number. Work within the constraint.
I think we already gave them direction. We talked about it the last finance meeting. I'm not sure why this came up tonight.
Want the board to vote on anything we don't have to vote on?
We're missing some board members, and we're going to vote on this. I think it's premature. I think we were very direct at our finance committee meeting. And so I don't agree with it. I think it's...
Well, there is a motion on the floor, so...
Somewhat shady.
If I may, sir?
Yes, sir.
Given that we do have, if it's not unanimous, my recommendation is we get to at least to the Finance Committee meeting and see what that is, and see where the guidance from the Finance Chair...
I think we talked about it. We talked about it, you know, and I think it needs to stay. I think we gave you pretty clear direction. Like I said, we didn't even know what we were going to expect, if we could expect anything. Nor do we know if we need to do anything right now, so...
Okay. So since we have a motion and a second, do we need to continue with the vote or not?
Yes, unless it's withdrawn.
Okay.
Well, if the recommendation from the administration is a unanimous vote is desired in this regard, then I do offer to pull the motion from the table.
Do we need a second for that?
The second would need to also consent to the withdrawal.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Remove from the table for consideration.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Eagles seven, Giants three.
I have two things I want to talk about real quick. My first is I'm concerned about some of the costs that we're going to incur by the sale of Tohican Valley as well as Milford. If these schools were to reopen, it was brought to my attention, and I pretty much think I knew, that we're going to be providing buses for these outside institutions. Is that true?
We do that already, and the costs are greater because it's outside the school district. We transport 170...
But still, even though, my question, I guess, is we have this reducing population, we're going to lose some kids, maybe to Catholic school, but we still got to pay for their buses, which the school district would then be paying for that.
We already do. There's no increase in costs.
Like, our kids went on Quakertown buses.
Actually, the cost would be less, wouldn't it?
It would. Mathematically, it would be, I would think it would be less because of the travel distance. So we would still be busing them, but they would be bused in our own backyard versus down into Pen Ridge or Souterton.
Sellersville.
Sellersville.
You know, I really feel that by the sale of both these buildings, I just want to say, this is not a conversation I'm trying to have, but I want to remind the other board members that we're really leaving ourselves in a precarious situation for very little gain at this moment in time. If something was to happen to one of the buildings, and we would need to relocate students to a different school building, we wouldn't have anywhere to take them. We would have no way to build a school real quick overnight, or even over the course of a year, even though we have property. I think that it would be a very diligent move for this district to retain at least one of those schools.
Mr. Akmanowicz, to your point, are you aware of any other schools that maintain an empty building on the event of an emergency?
I was just learning about a school district that has one empty building, and they're remodeling all their schools by moving all the kids to the empty school. I mean, I'm not saying we plan on doing a remodel, but it's not completely out of the believable that there's an empty school building.
Right. Your point a second ago was that in case of an emergency, it's nice to have an empty school. I'm asking if you know of any schools, districts that maintain an empty building for the case of an emergency where they might want to populate people.
At this moment in time, I could not give you any clear examples, but I don't live in any of those school districts, and neither does my kid.
And I'm not aware of any either. I mean, I've been to lots of school districts. We didn't all grow up necessarily here. I don't know of any schools. I've never heard of it, where someone keeps an empty building just in case.
I think it's a luxury we can't afford. It'd be good if we had all kinds of money and didn't care about squatting on public property and not putting it back into the hands that people could use it. But I think hoarding property is a bad thing.
Any other new board business?
I do have another...
One other thing. I sent the entire board an email about a proposal that was passed at Palisades regarding to taxation and preserved land. So just look at it, and maybe we can talk about it the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
The Jostens store. Josten, Jostlin, Jost, Josten?
Jostens.
You know, I had sent some emails previously because I had some interest in this. You know, do we know anything about, anybody out here have a Jostens thing on by any chance? You know, I have curiosity about how...
All the Eagles' Super Bowl rings are made by Jostens.
That's nice and all, but...
My high school class ring from 1978 was done by Jostens.
My high school ring is also from there. I got it. But the shirts and the hoodies and these materials that our students are purchasing, are they a union company? Do they purchase 100% cotton t-shirts? I think these are really important things for us as a board to keep in mind as we're supporting other organizations. And I have concerns, and I want more information on the products that we get from Jostens. What items do they use? Are they made in a sweatshop in India? Are they from Mexico? Are they made with communist labor? You know, these things are important, that we should pay attention to where we spend our money and where we let people brand our stuff, which was actually, you know, this is kind of a caveat to my initial conversation, which I didn't really, was unnecessary to get to. And so I think it's this board's responsibility to look into those things before we give them the right to sell stuff with our logo on it, if they're taking advantage of people. So I would be curious to find out their business model.
Do you believe it is this board's responsibility to only offer products made with, by union labor, or constructed out of 100% cotton or whatever, whatever in your mind you think is an appropriate article of clothing or swag with our logo on it? Do you believe personally that it's this board's responsibility to only make such things available for purchase?
I believe that we're given the power, the responsibility, to make sure that we can make responsibly made things available to our student body and to the other parents.
Are the students and parents not able to make their own decisions in terms of purchasing?
Sure, they'll go to the other place. We signed the place that makes union stuff with our logo on it. Oh, wait, one doesn't exist.
I don't know.
And that's our fault. And so to answer your question, we don't give them the choice. We say you can buy slave labor t-shirts from Mexico, and that's what you get. That's what we're saying.
Well, maybe we should advertise them as slave labor and see how many sell.
Maybe we should, you know? And I'm just asking for the information, so I'm not speaking, you know, in ignorance. I want to know what are they printing our shirts on? Where do those shirts come from? Are they American Apparel?
Sir, the, as people and members of the board have already talked about where they got their high school ring, and I'm sure, I know mine's in the jewelry box, and I haven't seen it for about 44 years. The, your cap and gown that you wore at the graduation was from Jostens. Ms. Mitchell, as you know from an email when you brought it up, she bought it at a thing from our school fort, school store from Jostens. Someone next to me said she bought one from Jostens.
Dr. Harner, just because something's a tradition doesn't make it right, or doesn't mean it has to stay that way?
Yes, sir, but for something like this and this process, and Jostens is probably in half the school districts in the country, that my request is that the board make, have a motion that passes that we spend our time doing the research.
You want this?
No, he asked for us to do the research for him, and I...
He doesn't want to spend the time unless it's more important to other people.
Yeah, that's, and if it's, if it's the board wants me to do it, then I'll sign it out, but that's going to take time. As we talked about, for the time we just spent talking tonight about the other contractors, really wasn't worth the time, the little money we make.
Okay. Do I have a motion to have the administration research Jostens per Mr. Akmanowicz's discussion?
Of course, I would make that motion primarily. Hope for a second.
Do we have a second? Apparently not, so the motion fails.
There's a really good video on making the Super Bowl ring from Jostens, and you can get a really good feel for the company. It's actually a really cool company, at least that is. It's really neat to see their factory, and they're all American workers.
Any more comments from board members? Okay. That brings us to our final public comment for the evening. This is a general public comment. Would anybody like to make any? Okay. Next is the calendar items. Next meetings are on October 25th. That's the Policy Committee meeting at 5:45, the Finance Committee meeting at 6:00, and the full board meeting at 7:00. On Thursday, November 1, we have Facilities Committee meeting at the DSC, Community Room A, at 6:00. And on Thursday, November 8, we have the Policy Committee meeting at 5:45, and the work session at 7:00. Which brings us to the final item, which is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Mr. Anderson, do I have a second? Mr. Anderson, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Jackson, discussion? All in favor, say aye. 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 Opposed? We are adjourned.